Do we think? Terrific. Again, we'll call to order the regular meeting of the City of Lakewood Planning Commission for August 28, 2024. And could we please have the roll call? And I believe that Commissioner Peters is online.
Yes, Commissioner Peters is online. She is joining us via Zoom, and I'll go ahead and do the roll call. Commissioner Grabalunas?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Here.
Commissioner Buckley?
Here.
Commissioner Kolkmeier?
Here.
Commissioner Furman?
Here.
Commissioner Overall?
Here.
Commissioner Peters?
Here. And just a quick question. I can't see the live stream or the planning commission. Are you able to see me?
We are able to see you, but the volume is quite low.
Hi. Is this any better if I'm closer?
Seems about the same to me.
Huh.
We've got folks working on it.
Okay, they are working on it, but Commissioner Peters, feel free to yell if you don't think
we're getting, if you're not getting our attention. And I think they'll also work on the issue of being able to see the live stream as well. Okay, the item number three, other legislative matters, recommendations regarding the proactive community engagement process for major site plan review and adjacent and park-adjacent overlay guidelines. As hopefully everybody recalls, we have had this as a request from city council for quite some time. We've had the opportunity for some public engagement. We held a study session on this probably about six weeks ago, I think. And we have now tried to reduce to writing, and it was posted on Lakewood Speaks, a first draft of what recommendations might be. I can only speak for myself, not other commissioners, but I would not anticipate taking final action today. That, of course, is always up to a motion and a majority, but my preference would be to take additional public comment and then look at changes. I have some changes that I'd like to suggest, and then a discussion on that. And then, again, that would be posted online and be on the agenda for our September 4th meeting. And with that, I will, I also, as a reminder to commissioners, make sure that when you read the Lakewood Speaks comments, you should do that when you log in so that it shows up. I know everybody's reading them, but it actually indicates how many commissioners of the total seven have read them. And I think it's good for the public to see that we all actually read them. I know that you have read them, but make sure that you click read, and that will, and not R-E-A-D, not R-E-D. And that'll make, that'll indicate to the public that their comments have been read by all commissioners. I'll also just note before we go to public comment here that we did get quite a few comments. I would suggest that we've seen some support for the recommendation related to habitat criteria. I think we, there's some support in there for creating the opportunity to subscribe to projects in the pre-planning process. And the only other thing I would note is that I think there may be a little bit of a misunderstanding, and this happens, this is a complicated process. We're dealing with recommendations that would be implemented through an ordinance in the future and applicable in the future. This is not a hearing on any particular project. So I'm sorry if there was confusion about that. And just one particular comment that was made that I want to make sure that we clear this up for that individual. I think there was a concern that the recommendations were suggesting that the community needed to be more proactive in getting involved. And it's my understanding, and I think all commissioners' understanding, that it's actually the opposite. What the city council wanted us to look at is recommendations for how developers and the city could be more proactive in engaging the public. So hopefully that will assure that particular individual. And with that, I'm not sure, Mr. Rice, do you have, or the list of folks who have signed in, because we'll go to public comment? And while the list is coming down, just a reminder that what we do at the planning commission is we only talk about items that are on the agenda. It's not general public comment. It's only agended items. Thank you. And we also encourage more back and forth on this planning commission. So after you've made whatever comments you want to make, if you don't mind, you don't have to, but if you don't mind, we'd appreciate if you'd stay at the microphone, because commissioners may have follow-up questions. They may be trying to get more in-depth information from you. Sometimes they want you to elaborate on a point, so that is something that we encourage here and want to make sure that people get that opportunity. With that, we will go to public comment, and Tom Durth, I believe, is first up. And I think we have the timer set at three minutes, but again, there may be opportunities for us to engage you even further, but.
Thank you very much. Panel, I really appreciate the opportunity for speaking here tonight. And my name is Tom Durth. I'm in Ward Three, and I live adjacent to Belmar Park. And at a previous meeting, there was a discussion about how can we be more open to the public? How can we have a better communication? And the word that I brought up when I spoke that night was the word trust, that there was a big lack of trust as we talked to people in our neighborhoods and whatever we're out there doing, you talk about the City of Lakewood, and right away, people say, well, what are they doing? We can't trust them. And it's because so much of this stuff goes on behind the scenes, and I don't know that everybody really goes out of their way to find out what's going on, but I know that door needs to be opened a little bit further. And so my question to you would be, since that last meeting, what specifically has been done to build trust in the City of Lakewood? And I don't want it in my three minutes, though, so if I can use my three minutes. The other topic being the park overlay guidance, guidelines. I'm speaking right now from my ignorance of that particular topic, but I want to find out if in these guidelines, as we're asking developers to follow, what, if anything, has to do with parking and/or anything having to do with traffic flow? Because I know this situation that just happened out in Ling, out in, excuse me for being ignorant on that, out in Youngfield Road on 15th. There was a, there's a new development that's supposed to go in there, and yet there's a problem with the traffic. And I know the traffic in other areas, I won't mention any specific parks, but the traffic right now is just absolutely horrendous. Just whenever there's like an event anywhere near this particular park, the traffic on a windy road is very dangerous. I have lots and lots of pictures of cars going down that road where you can't see around the corners, if there's cars parked on both sides of the street. And so that is something that I really am concerned about, specifically in the area of parking. And my question, another question I have for the panel is, have you ever been around where there was a development of one of these large apartment buildings where they truly dealt with their own parking? And I'm not just talking about parking spots in the building, but I'm talking about the overflow of people who don't want to pay for parking and dealing with the situation of, oh, I only have seven seconds left, I got to talk fast. Even if they have guests over, if they have friends over, if they have people over for birthday parties, weddings, whatever it may be, there's no room to park. I have never seen any one of these big projects where there has not been overflow parking that has destroyed those neighborhoods. We've had police in our neighborhood for our neighborhood greetings, I'm over time, that we've asked them.
But you may get follow-up questions, so.
Okay.
But is there, you want to just bring it to a close? Did you have a final point?
That's pretty much what I want to say. I had some other things. I would love to know about the trust issue, and if there's nothing on this guidance on parking or overflow parking or traffic flow, why not? Thank you for hearing.
Yep. And if you don't mind taking some questions?
No problem.
I'm going to start with Commissioner Peters online. Do you have any questions?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay. Any other commissioners here? A couple of things. So, and this is always tough, because there's a lot of different things that happen in development and planning. The thing that's in front of us today is, do we want to make recommendations to the city council about ways the city could be better at engaging the public? And it's not, it's not specifically related to traffic or parking, but if people have parking and traffic concerns, then hearing about those earlier in the process is, I think, one of the objectives we're trying to achieve. Let me ask you this. We have a draft recommendation that says that information has to be available from the city online, and individuals could say, hey, I want to be alerted at the very first pre-planning meeting. And the reason that are, as we've discussed it, that we're recommending that is that a lot of times people don't hear about projects until there's formal notice and an application has already been filed. And our sense was that that was kind of late in the process. Do you have a reaction to having that information be available at the pre-planning process, which would be typically months, if not longer, before a formal application is filed?
Not only months before, but probably periodically leading up to that also, because somebody misses that three months ago, four months ago, and then all of a sudden, it's an approved deal, then all of a sudden, we're saying, what happened? So if it could be something that's out there and out there frequently, I think that might be helpful, helpful also.
Well, the city has no knowledge of a property owner's intent until they contact the city.
Right.
So that is kind of when pre-planning starts, and they have a meeting, and we've heard that nine of 10 of those that go into the pre-planning process never make it to a formal application. Basically, it was a bad idea, and staff explains it's a bad idea, and it goes away, or they make changes to it, and it becomes a different kind of project. But do you think it would be useful to have that information be available from basically the first day the city finds out about it?
I think anything that's communicating with the community is a blessing.
Okay.
And I'm wondering, is any of this possibly even, even probable to be retroactive?
Yeah, so.
When I say that, I'm sorry for interrupting.
Sure.
What I mean by that is deals that are already close to being closed. Is there any way for them to then say, okay, we really should have communicated more effectively? Let's go back to the drawing board and communicate. Let people know what's here, hear what people's comments are before it's too late.
I can't give you legal advice.
Yeah, and I wouldn't understand it anyway.
But at some point, lawyers will become involved and say, well, at this point, there are vested rights that the property owner has, but they'll have to argue that out.
Right. And I hope they do.
Yeah. You had asked a question about overlay districts and what that meant.
Right.
So one of the questions that the city council said was, what do you think about an overlay district, which would be a type of zoning that applies in a broader area? And it's, it's not on, you know, parcel A, it's on a broader area that shares a common, you know, maybe issue. So far, we have not really found a consensus on suggesting an overlay district for parkland, and the comments been made in the past that we have a lot of parks, and they are all unique. So I guess I would just ask, do you think there is some general principle that should be applied to all park-adjacent property?
Oh, absolutely. First of all, what impact, to understand the impact that it's going to have on that park, because, you know, you look at some, I know we're not supposed to get into specific examples, but when you've got a beautiful park and all of a sudden, some developer comes along with a real lot of money, they can easily get access to that and ruin the view for people. People love these parks for meditation. I mean, people need meditation today. I mean, you talk to everybody who's nervous about their jobs, they're scared about this, they're, it's a scary place to be today, is living in this country. It's scary, I hate to say that, but people find solace in these parks. And if you're walking by and all of a sudden, you got this high rise, and you've got noise coming out, and you got dogs pooping all over, the people are not going to clean up after, and you've got noise, and you've got more cars coming through and delivery trucks, it changes a person's lifestyle that they've been comfortable with. Those are the kind of things. I think you need to start with who's around that park, who uses the park, start from there and build backwards and say, what can we do to make this remain a place that people can really use for solace, enjoyment, growing their families, playing frisbee with their kids? And instead of tearing up a beautiful piece of property to build a parking lot because we need overflow parking, why ruin it? That's where we need to start, is not necessarily what the park is, where it is, who's going to live there, but what's the lifestyle that that park is supporting? And that's what this city claims to be great at. There are billboards in the building here talking about this being a tree city, and yet we're ready to tear down a lot of trees. So that's where we need to begin. That's my opinion off the top of my head right now. So we need to start with what's important to the people who use that park and pay the taxes to keep that park beautiful, wonderful, and open to their needs. Start there and then build around what that park area should be, what the, what the guideline should be around that park. And I'm not so sure a five-story building is going to do it.
Commissioner Buckley?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, Mr. Durth, I appreciate your comments. I very much relate to finding solace and peace in parks. It's a reason to go there, walking or biking around a park is the best way for me to get creative ideas and just unwind. I get it, and that's an important thing to keep and cherish for our residents. At the same time, there's one thing that, being on a planning commission in particular has taught me, is that planning issues are nuanced and complicated and wrought with difficulty and contradiction. And I think I spot a little bit of something you just said. In your, you know, in your initial three-minute remarks, you noted issues of parking and traffic around certain parks with events. I think you're probably talking about Belmar Park, and I think it's okay to talk about a specific park, maybe just not a specific project. And sure, I've been to events at that park in particular, and yeah, there's a lot of parking there during heavy events. But in the previous answer to Commissioner Kolkmeier's question, you also said, well, let's not, you know, rip up part of our park to build more parking. And so I hope you appreciate, there's a tension here, right? Like, I think we all want there to be enough parking. Yes, I want that. I think we all want, you know, parks to not be paved over with new parking. Yeah, I want that, but you got to strike a balance between those two contradictory things, do you not? What, what general principles would you say for how to do that?
Well, first of all, leave it alone.
So is it always true in every case that everything exactly as exists today has exactly enough parking and never too little or never too much?
I, right now, there's, there's probably an appropriate, close to appropriate number of parking spaces right now, but if there's several hundred car overflow there added on to a very narrow, curvy street with no other access other than two sides of that one street for safety, I mean, these are the things we're worried about. I live in that area. I can't imagine what would happen with this dryness that we've experienced right now. One little person smoking a cigarette across the street and a wind from the west, we're gone. We need to have at least some flow there. This, this building, since we're not supposed to talk about it, but you said I could, so.
Well, I said, I said you could talk about the park, not about any particular project that might come for us.
This particular park, it is very.
And just so we're clear, we've been told that that project, which has not been finalized in its review, will come before us in a public hearing, so.
I would be happy.
You're going to get that opportunity, but.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So anyway, I, if they, if they build that building, it's still an if, they would have to put in more parking. Why do we need to do that? That building, if we're looking for more housing, there are more appropriate places for a building like that. And I know it's, it's too late to talk about that now, but this is why we need to talk early on before something like that is three years into the process of being okay.
Yeah, understood. We are getting perilously close to talking about a particular project, but just in general, near any park.
I apologize.
Adjacent, no worries, I understand it's difficult. In general, adjacent to any park, there is land, and the land has zoning, and there may be existing uses on the land, and whatever it's zoned for, someone could change a use within the rights of that zoning. That's just generally true. And when they do, they have to build whatever it is to the current standards, which includes how much parking to provide, right? If I'm not mistaken, I think it was about four or five years ago, I think about five years ago, 2019, the city council increased parking requirements across a lot of land uses, in particular residential, I think doubling the parking requirement in like the suburban context even for, for multifamily, right? And so I think that was maybe a course correction to try to strike a better balance there, right? But again, like, that happened, but most of the development we have in the city hasn't happened in the last five years, so you're not really going to see it until something new comes along, right? But knowing that most people don't recognize that changes like that have happened, is there still like more to do, like with striking the balance, you know? I don't know. It's a hard and fraught issue, right? Because we know we've tried to address these very things you're talking about before. And have we even seen what the impact of it is in a way that like makes sense? And if we haven't, what general principles are we using to make sure we're further refining in the correct direction?
Was that a question?
It was.
I'm not sure what to answer.
Yeah.
Other than the fact that right now, with what's on its way, is scaring the daylights out of me, my neighbors, and the people who are living next to other parks who are fearful of the same thing happening.
Sure.
And that's without mentioning any name.
Right. Yeah, and this is exactly what makes planning, I think, so fraught and difficult, is that, you know?
Yeah, you got a tough job.
We have to, we have to adopt general rules to foresee all possible circumstances and whoever can. I don't know. I think I don't have any more questions, though.
Okay. Any other message you can take back to the city council, letting them know our fears and concerns? Please do so.
Okay. I don't see any other questions, I think. I appreciate it very much, Mr. Durth.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Appreciate it.
Cecilia Greenman? And if you wouldn't mind just stating your name and where you're from, and we'll get going.
Hi. Hi, I'm Cecilia Greenman. I'm with Ward, I'm in Ward Two, and I thank.
I'm with Ward, I'm in Ward Two, and I thank the commission for the opportunity to speak on the topic of proactive community engagement for major site plan review, and for recommending this resolution to city council. I agree with the idea of incentivizing proactive community engagement, because it is necessary for developers of a major site plan to respond to public comment. The process currently is developer takes all, which could mean imposing onerous and sometimes dangerous traffic conditions on neighborhoods, and creating adverse environmental impacts on existing natural areas and parks. I know there is a need to find housing in Lakewood because of the growing population. But again, the needs of the existing residents should also be considered. These are people who've made Lakewood the vibrant community that it is. Take my neighborhood, for instance. I'm in Iber. We host garden tours, recycling events, clothes swaps, and we support the neighborhood elementary school. That's what a community looks like, and it is disrespectful to disregard personal testimony on concerns of traffic, parking, safety, that these people, such people, experience firsthand. Both options listed in the resolution are desirable to me, so well done with that. Although option two points back to city council to amend a zoning ordinance, I am very gratified that the planning commission recognizes the importance of evaluating the potential harms that parks could experience from the effects of development, including loss of habitat, noise pollution, and the impacts on birds of lights and glass from very tall buildings. Park-adjacent overlay districts are critical, not only to protect the integrity of wildlife habitat, but to maintain the reasons that people actually visit parks. And we were speaking about or listening to that before. They go to the experience, the, a sense of well-being, just to relax, maybe walk the dog, photograph nature, photograph your quinceañera. What people do not want is to feel that they are walking in someone's backyard, as would happen without a buffer between a massive development project and a park. I do take exception where the resolution states that the most effective community involvement is at the point where zoning regulations are affecting a parcel. This is in reference to the suggestion that the planning commission review all major site plans for approval or denial. It's my understanding that so-called legislative zoning changes can occur without neighborhood notification. And if this situation has indeed happened in some cases, a remedy would be for the planning commission to review a major site plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Peters, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I guess my question would be in regard to the buffer zone. I did see a number of comments on Lakewood Speaks requesting different distances, and so I would be interested in your recommendation on the size of a potential buffer zone.
Were you able to hear that?
It's about buffer zones and what I would...
Yeah, you had, you had made a comment that there should be buffer zones so that individuals don't feel like people are walking in their backyard.
That's true. And again, it, we were listening and speaking before about how parks are unique, and then developments are unique as well. Some developments, there may not be much of an impact or an adverse effect to a park, but certainly, when you get into high-rise situations that are directly adjacent to a park, to me, that, that kind of, you start to eliminate the park feel, the park experience. And so I think it, it would have to, there definitely should be buffers to parks, but they need to be looked at individually, each park, so...
Thank you, appreciate that.
Commissioner Furman.
So you talked about the high-rises being adjacent to parks being generally a bad idea. I would assume you have other things that you can imagine as being inherently bad adjacent to parks.
Car wash.
Car wash. The reason I mentioned this is, I think, I guess I would ask, would you not agree, I understand your hesitance about the idea of the most impactful time for community engagement is at the zoning phase, or at the zoning ordinance drafting phase, the change, the zoning ordinance? Wouldn't you agree that it's better to set up especially rules that you consider sort of sacrosanct, like a no high-rises or no car washes adjacent in the park overlay? I would think that there is some truth to that idea, right? That there are elements we could put within the zoning that you could set up and we can step away and know that those are addressed.
I agree with that. And I agree with the fact that zoning is the optimal place to start that conversation. My question was that are the notifications of zoning changes always made to the nearby residents? In a case where you have a park, if I can mention Belmar yet again, where it's not just the residents who should be notified, because Belmar is used by many, many people outside of the area. I've talked to people who come from, oh my gosh, they're from Westminster or Aurora, they come for different reasons. I spoke with some people from Denver who said they wanted to get out of Denver but didn't want to make the trek to the mountains. They come to Belmar, because it's, it's an experience where you can be in nature and just, you know, relaxed. So the, yeah, the zoning is important, but, and you should notify people, but in a situation like this, I would think that more people in all of Lakewood should be notified of some kind of, of this type of project that is going to be in place, because it affects all of the park visitors, no matter where they're from.
Understood. Well, you know, I just was trying to get to the idea that I think if there's general agreement about the things that we want to never see park adjacent, that zoning would be the place to address that. But, okay, excellent.
So here's some tough questions. You know, one of the concerns that I have personally, and I know others do as well, is kind of the first-in, close-the-door-behind-you. Folks that are on the parks in our city have something wonderful. Do you have any concern that we are not making that available to other people who may live there, and most importantly, to folks that cannot afford to own their own single-family house with their own yard? Maybe they can only afford to buy a condo or to rent. Do they not also have, don't we also have an interest in giving them an opportunity to live near a park?
Yes, we do. But we should not be destroying a park and diminishing the quality of the park to accommodate development. That's how, how I see it. I, I would, I think that part of Lakewood's process is that they are trying to make sure that there is park space distributed throughout the city for, especially in wards that may not have had it so much. But, but again, when you have a situation where you can really damage the environment of a park, I think that needs to be taken into account. One of the, I was hoping that maybe in the future for, we could start to work the impacts on the environment into some of this process. In some of this process, we should have a baseline for what the environment is, and then we can try and figure out what we project a development might, the effects of a development on a park.
Commissioner Buckley.
Thank you. Ma'am, you said a moment ago, you do not want to see development harm a park, diminish or, I forget the exact word, but you don't want to see development degrade a park. Can you, in your imagination, being very creative, imagine ways that we could require developments to enhance a park that is nearby? And there's always going to be lots that are not parks next to a park, and it's always going to happen in the course of a city, that there's just various economic reasons and pressures why parcels will redevelop from time to time. And so when a parcel is redeveloped near a park, what can be done to require that redevelopment to enhance the park, in your view?
Oh...
Like, is it always bad? Is it always assumed that a development has to degrade a park? Can it not enhance a park? And how would we do that if so?
Well, the city could look into, perhaps, when development happens, trying to engage the community or the people in the new development to become friends of a park, so that they have an investment in the park itself, and would feel protective of it. That is a possibility, and we were, I think there was a question to Tom previously about what we do about parking, and, and do we just say that we should always keep it where it is here in 2024? Maybe, maybe some events at parks have to be a timed entry. We, other national parks certainly have done that. And areas, even in, you know, like Maroon Bells, they have, they don't allow parking, but you have to be shuttled in. That kind of workaround for visiting parks, visiting natural places, because the more people we have, the more impact we have. That might be a way to, to sort of tamp that down a little bit.
All right, thank you. I appreciate your thoughtfulness.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Gary Ray.
I'll see if we can do my three minutes to do more than tell you, tell you that I feel completely out of my league. Celia was great. Tom was great, especially Celia. But I find myself more engaged in this whole conversation relative to a particular project, which you're already pretty much familiar with, what that project might be. And, and I like what Celia brought forward, especially in terms of, well, and Tom as well, take into account the character of the park that's going to be impacted by a project should be fundamentally done, should be a done deal. It should be early in the agenda. It shouldn't be an afterthought. That, that really seems kind of obvious almost, at least to me in this moment, and probably because Celia brought it up so eloquently. She responded pretty well to your question about how can a developer, and how can you engage a developer in taking into account that park? And she said, well, developer can become a friend of the park. Well, again, I don't necessarily expect that to happen on a personal basis, so to speak, that a developer will say, oh, let's, let's engage the community in a, like, let's have a cookout at the park and we'll get to know these residents and what they love about the park. But they don't have to do that. They have to just be mindful of what, and you know, I don't know that you can put residential development right next to a park without impacting it. And I don't know how you could actually take a development... Yeah, I'm going to use up my three minutes here without making some significant...
Go ahead.
I'm kind of new in this arena, talking to you folks, and very, very new in it. And I got engaged in it relative to a particular project that's in the development phase. And you stated that it is very far from being a done deal. Is that true?
We haven't, it hasn't even been sent to us. And there has been no final decision, and the public hearing has not been set, so...
And a public hearing will be, like, Lakewood Speaks would be an option for a resident to say, oh, there's this planning meeting going on, I want to go there. That's where I would find that out.
Yeah, and it will be a, that matter would be, we believe, a public hearing before this body.
You believe, meaning?
Meaning nothing's been sent to us yet, but it's our expectation that that application will be sent to us at some point.
Okay. Well, I don't really have anything specific to offer beyond that. If you have any questions for me, I'll do my best to...
Okay.
...give you some response.
Commissioner Peters, do you have anything?
I don't think I have any questions at this point. Thank you.
Okay, others? I'm not, I want to follow up on something you just said, which is that really, there should be no residential development adjacent to a park. Do you mean even single-family homes, or...
No, I...
What do you mean?
Well, I didn't really mean it that way. I, I, I get that development happens. My dad used to say, Gary, people got to live somewhere. Okay, got it. And, no, I didn't really mean that no residential development should hap, happen next to a park. I will hold to that one comment I made. I think really the, the quality of the park, the nature of the area, should be a fundamental upfront issue in the planning stage, in the pre-planning stage. I think that makes perfect sense, because indeed, our parks are valuable to us. You know it.
Well, thank you very much. We very much appreciate your comments.
Well, I'll do better the next time, maybe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Regina Hopkins.
Thanks for allowing me to speak. I appreciate that the planning commission is recommending that the city council expand the enhanced development menu to incentivize proactive community engagement with developers. I believe this approach will help create a transparent process for concerned community members to have their voices heard before they are told there is nothing that can be done. I hope that by adopting this new enhanced development menu, that it will open up opportunities for engagement between developers and the community, which will hopefully align with the city's comprehensive plan goals, such as achieving tree canopy coverage by 2025. I also commend you for including language that acknowledges the importance of flora and fauna in Lakewood, and how developments impact these habitats, which are vital to our community, both human and non-human. However, after reviewing the draft resolution for this evening, I have a question regarding the proposal to the city council. It states on page two at the bottom that at least one point from item 29 of the enhanced development menu is required for the development site, which site, if it's within 300 feet of an existing park or open space. My concern is that requiring only one point sets a very low standard. I do feel that this should be higher with the way it's currently worded. They can get away with just having an informational meeting versus an interactive meeting, which I think most citizens are asking for. Regarding the park overlay, I believe it should... Regarding the park overlay, I believe it should cast as wide a net as possible to preserve the natural spaces. I, for one, do not want to live in a concrete jungle and feel, and it feels like Colorado is just becoming, just like a skyscraper paradise, like Chicago, where developers extend, developments extend right to the edge of sidewalks now all over Lakewood. This trend does not reflect what most people love about Lakewood. Many choose to live here precisely because of its open spaces, and yet these are shrinking day by day, affecting not only the residents, but also the plants and animals with whom we share this earth.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Peters, did you have any questions?
No, I appreciate these comments. Thank you very much.
All right. Other commissioners? If not, I have some. I always do, and I very much appreciate, I, I think you could bring us a unique perspective. You're someone who I think has been really engaged in the community, who has been working with a lot of people on development issues. What would be the most effective tools for you to feel like you are a part of the process and you are engaged at a meaningful period of time?
I do think the public notices are important and kind of like what Tom mentioned, not just once, but more than once. In case you miss the first opportunity, it's like, it's not game over for you. You still have a chance to get, you know, hear about the issues and do something, say something, take action on it. And also letting people know what action steps they can take to affect change. Some people don't know, like, you can come to this planning commission meeting, we want to hear your voice. Or you can, you know, whatever it might be, like, giving people a to-do, like, options of what they can do.
One of the things I appreciate your comments on, the enhanced development menu, and I understand the point issue, I think that is something that we are going to talk about. The option two under there, I'm curious what your feeling is about that, because that, that really is intended to incentivize a developer not just to engage, but to kind of demonstrate, well, this was what was asked for, this is the response to it. It's kind of more of a documented give and take. Do you think that would be useful, or is that something that...
Well, documentation, I think, is, is important here. And, but I do think that, because I, I don't know if I saw everything that was included in the, the write-up before the meeting today that I read, but there was one option where you'd get four points if they just make an informational meeting, and then there was like 50 points, I think, if they give a interactive meeting. And I think those are way different point values. And one offers the public an opportunity to have an interaction and have their voices heard, which I think we all want and we're asking for. The other one is just like, they still get, you know, credit for that, but they only just gave information. I don't think that seems fair.
Okay. Now, I'll push back a little bit. Skyscraper paradise? I mean, one of the things that's tough for us, and we want community involvement, but sometimes it's subject to hyperbole. "My neighborhood will be destroyed by this project." You know, this is why, you know, living in a concrete jungle. And I understand that in advocacy, you know, some of that terminology is used, but I'm wondering your thoughts, is there a way to be a little more nuanced? And, and have it be persuasive? Or is it that you really think that we have skyscrapers like Chicago here?
Well, so I grew up in Lakewood, so historical reference. I, anyone who's been here long enough, I'm 39, right? If you've been here long enough, you've seen a huge shift. I don't even feel like this is the same state I grew up in anymore, and that's a short, relatively short amount of time. West Colfax, like, they're built to the edge of sidewalks now. Union Square or Union Street in Lakewood, you know, a few miles from where I grew up, my house, like, it, they're literally built to the edge of sidewalks now. And I was always like wondering, how did they do that? That's not how I grew up. This is not even the community I grew up in anymore. And, and now I'm starting to learn about the process of why, and I realized they're buying out of parkland. That's what's, what they're doing with this fee-in- lieu option, to buy out of it. And, and I think that, that is creating this concrete jungle now. And it feels like Denver now. It feels like just Denver's encroaching upon Lakewood, and Lakewood doesn't even feel like Lakewood anymore to me. So that's what I mean. From my perspective, I grew up here. From someone who came from Chicago, they probably think this is wonderful, like, green space. But to me, this is, this is, it's been disheartening and destroyed.
And, and, you know, obviously there are, there are a lot of folks that agree with you. Lakewood has changed. And, you know, the perspective of folks who have been there that long, they are a shrinking percentage of the residents. Is there an obligation by the Planning Commission in making recommendations or the City Council to hear equally the voices of all Lakewood residents? Or do you think...
Yes, I do think so. And I think the missing perspective is of the voiceless community members that we share our, share this earth with, the animals, the plants, the flora and the fauna, as you put in the, in the write-up today, or whenever you put that in there. That's the voice that's missing. We have the voice of plenty of people who are new to this town, and really, that is the majority of the population now, because a lot of Coloradan people who are born here have given up on this state because of the encroaching development. And I'm considering leaving because of this exact reason why I'm here in front of you right now. It's that problematic for me. It's that disheartening for me. And I know many of people who've left Colorado is because of this overdevelop, sense of overdevelopment, that it's not like the place they grew up in anymore. And it's just, just why they're leaving. And so you're losing those longtime community residents, that sense of community, and it's, it changed drastically. So I, I totally believe in this park overlay is a huge, huge issue. It should be cast as wide a net as possible. And as far as like, what the guidelines would be to use, you have them in your own ordinances already. As a minimum, I do agree with Celia, every park should be individualized. But I do think that a minimum, you have that, the codes and the formula in your own ordinances for parkland percentage dedication, minimum. It should be applied.
And just so I understand what you're, when you say, I mean, that, we have a parkland dedication ordinance, do you think that that ordinance is adequate? It should be changed? What is your, I'm not sure I understand.
I think it should be, I, I don't know the exact calculations on that. I do think it's, it's, from me, my perspective, yes, I'd love to see that increased. By how much? I don't know exactly. But yes, I just would love to see it increased, or at least minimally, minimally applied, how it's currently worded, to parks. I think that's critical, to have that buffer zone to parks. And as far as like, building like exclusions next to parks, I don't think, you know, building, like they did at Sloane's Lake. You know, there's huge, huge, like, probably, I don't know how many floors, a 10, at least, that is next to Sloane's Lake, but that's Denver. That, that, I don't know. I think that's also inappropriate. There is a street separating that, that particular part of Denver. But, but I still think those are high for considering what you have. Important fragile area. And Lakewood has, Lakewood has a lot of little parks, but, but close-built homes. And, and we're not known for these, like, high-rises next to parks, and that would not fit in. I think that's also in our own codes, that we want it to look and blend in with the existing structures, which that would really set it apart and make it feel like Denver is really encroaching upon Lakewood.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Marcia Cohen?
Hello, I'm Marcia Cohen, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. And I'm glad to see the resolution. I was really dismayed when we came to the meeting and heard that you really never see a plan. And that, I think that this is a good step towards making sure the Planning Commission actually sees the development plans and has an opportunity to talk about them and, and invite public comment. I like the idea of it being as early as possible. Having worked for a developer, I know that that can be a little troublesome, and you have a balance there, because contracts aren't even signed. And yet, they may be having to disclose information to the public before they, that would jeopardize their ability to be able to negotiate what they want to on the property. But I think as early as possible and often, and I also think that it's important that it's not buried. I think that notification often meets the letter of the law, but it does not really engage people, because you have to dig to find the notifications. So I think that that needs to be something that's, that is really taken into consideration, is how are the notifications given? And when it affects a park, then I think that it does need to be as early as possible. And when there are initial discussions, is probably a good time to do that. I like the idea of overlay commission. I like, I like the idea that potentially there could be a group that is then going to take all of the parks into consideration, and also the, the areas where there are not parks. Because I think that having open space, whether it's next to a park or it's just open space on a property or in a neighborhood, is vital to, to the city, to the flora and fauna, as Regina said, but just to the integrity of the city. I think that having open space on every development is important. And these developments that have been going, you know, lot line to lot line, don't allow, there is no open space on that property. It is, it's just completely developed, and that detracts from the city as a whole. So I think taking into consideration and being able to, to comment on those, but for you all to be able to see them and say, "Do we really need this project to be lot line to lot line?" Or can we have a requirement that there is some open space on all of those large developments? And, you know, I understand there's probably another million people going to move here, and Lakewood wants to be a big part of that economic development and providing homes for those people. So it's, it is a balance. But I think by having some open space on all those properties, and particularly when a park is involved, that the, that there is a, a buffer zone between the park and the, and the property is, is vital. I think it's important that we don't allow developers to pay to get out of that requirement. And I think if that was not taken away, that that money that is paid should be used for parks. And you mentioned earlier about having parks in areas where there are not parks, or open space where there's not open space. If you receive money in lieu of a buffer zone or dedicated land, it seems to me that it should be earmarked, it has to be used to put those parks in those other neighborhoods or in places where there are parks. But I think if there was more requirement that the developers have open space in their parcels, then that will help ease the requirement to have to take care of all these little parks, because they would have to, the property owner themselves would take care of those. So those are kind of my thoughts.
I appreciate that. Your time has expired, and we're going to see if there's some questions. Commissioner Peters, did you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. Thank you very much.
Okay. Commissioner Furman?
Hi, thanks. I, I wanted to ask, so you talked about the parkland and open space. Would you see it as a requirement that the multifamily projects provide parkland dedication or open space? And I only make this distinction, just in case you don't know it offhand, is there's a difference between the, a development being required to not fill their site and the requirement for them to dedicate parkland?
No, I think that they need to leave some open space. I don't think they have to dedicate parkland, but that there needs to be open space on all of these large parcels. But I think when you're developing next to a park, that that needs to be looked at. What is that buffer zone? What is that? What is the, that we're not impacting the overall integrity of the park? But that we are increasing the open space in the, in the city.
And then I said, the, the other question I had, I, I believe, and Planning can correct me, when it is fee-in- lieu, that's a decision that's made by the Parks Department, and I believe they do spend that money specifically on parks. It goes to them, and they do spend it on parks. I guess my question would be, is, when it, because I feel like that addresses your question, but I want to make sure I'm right in asking it. That is your concern, is if they do fee-in- lieu, the parks should have that money, and it should be going towards parks in some way? Is that, that's what you were saying, right?
That's a little too broad. I mean, going to the, to parks in some way?
Well, no, I think, I think it actually goes to the, I think it even goes specifically to the area.
I would prefer that we not do fee-in- lieu at all. My preference would be that, that if they're developing, that they need to provide open space. And that... But if that can't happen, then I think that money needs to be used to increase open space. So that it's given to the park doesn't necessarily mean that it would be used to increase open space.
No, I think you're right. I think, I think the reality is sometimes parks chooses the money because of the cost of maintaining a park, so they need the money itself to actually maintain parks. But I understand. Okay, thank you.
And I, I would just also note that it's not always in our control. There are state laws that are applicable to some of these issues, and we just don't have the flexibility to do things that we may want to do. I'm going to drill down just a little bit on the buffer, because we've, we've heard that from a number of folks, there ought to be, if you're near a park, there ought to be a buffer. It's a little ironic, because the park itself is open. So to then say that the private property owner adjacent to it also needs to have a buffer, but we hear that. What would you think would be a reasonable buffer on a typical park in Lakewood? Is that something you've got an opinion on, or?
I think, from my understanding, and I don't know a lot about it, but from my understanding, the current buffer was adequate. And it's just that it's, they can buy out of it. So I, I, but I don't know. I guess I can't really speak to it.
And as I say, and as I think Commissioner Furman pointed out, there are some different terms here that get used. There's one requirement for developments, that there be a certain amount of open space. Well, that's land that they own, but they don't build on, on their own land. Parkland dedication is typically, always, a requirement that they dedicate it. They give it to the city. It becomes a park. Or they pay a fee-in- lieu that goes towards parks. So the buffer, I think it's, it sounded like you were thinking more in terms than others, I, I think. We're saying there ought to be a certain amount of open space on a, on a property to be developed if it's adjacent to a park?
And didn't you say that there is a requirement that there, that there is open space on any development? Did I hear you say that?
Yeah, you know, it depends a lot on the different zone districts and percentages and different things. But I guess I was trying, and it's probably not fair to put you on the spot like this, but I was trying to get a sense is, you know, we, we have notions of setbacks, right? Five feet, 10 feet, 15 feet, 30 feet. And I think of those as kind of like required buffers. Is that what you were thinking about? Is that what you were thinking about when you said there ought to be a buffer, is a certain distance?
There ought to be a buffer zone, yes. And I think, you know, to the point that's been brought up many times, is that each park is different. And so a very small park is going to require something different, and if there's, you know, most of the development around it is not impacting the park, that's going to be different than if you're building a six-story building that's going to impact the park. So I think that that's your charge to make sure that that -- the integrity of the park is maintained.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And the last name that I have, but there may be others, is it Lanny James?
Laney.
Laney, I'm sorry. Laney. You're right. You know your name. I do not. I'm sorry.
My name is Laney.
Actually, Laney, right here is just over one. Thanks.
Thank you. I live in Ward five. I'm part of a walking group that, in over the last five or six years, we have walked every Saturday where the weather was good, in the city park, and value. I would like to speak to Concrete Jungle, although you haven't been happy to hear about that. I have read a quote to the effect that once land is covered by concrete, it never gets uncovered. Now, there are rare instances where patios are taken out or that kind of thing, but it's true with -- most roads don't get taken out, most concrete doesn't get taken out. And there's something, I grew up near New York City. I've lived here 50 years in Colorado and 40 years in Lakewood, and I appreciate the parks, and I appreciate being here to speak with you. I wanted to speak into this idea that's already been mentioned in several different ways about green space or open space, and you're calling buffer, that there should be that kind of thing as a new development is being planned, and that it's important to human beings. And I'd like to share this book. It's called The Human Zoo, and the author talks about the fact, and you've got a picture here of a high-rise building, that when people come home at night and go into their building and ride the elevator and take the stairs up to their level and go in and lock the door, if they spend the night there, they might as well have been locked on the outside in a zoo. They are stuck in a small space. And I'm concerned about the access to green space on the property they live on. And we have three different senior centers in Lakewood that have garden areas, raised beds for residents to grow in. There's one that has a dog-walking area that's fenced and a dog-potting area, and another area that's the garden. And I think people need that kind of space, and you can live alone in a apartment or a condo and need to get out of there. You can be with people that something comes up that it would be good to get somewhere else. And a garden, a green space area is a safe, good place. So I'm here to speak to that, and I'm not a fan of a fee-in lieu. I'm a fan of parkland. I've been told by one of the council members that the reason Lakewood prefers the fee-in lieu is that the little parkland areas are difficult to maintain. We have a sustainable -- sustainability department, and I've been on two different tours in two different sustainability neighborhoods of yards that are maintained, that are natural, not needing mowing, not needing water, and that's the kind of space I would like to see. And I have a question for you. I see my time is over, but I have a question about the fact that a number of meetings ago, I was here at the Planning Commission meeting, where people from the arts area, and I thought they were talking about having had a committee going for 10 years or 40 years, I don't remember the number of years, but they're the people that have been behind the development of art on Colfax and other places. And there has been a communication with that group, and there have been a lot of discussions about the art. Some people didn't like certain kinds of the art. I haven't been close to that, but there has been a community engagement. And I was recently at an exhibit in the building across from us where they had cards and they were looking for feedback to that committee that engages, the Planning Commission. And I'm a member of a church where the pastor is always saying he doesn't want to start a new program, find someone who's doing it. And that's someone doing what you're wanting to start. And to my understanding, it's pretty successful because there are art areas in Belmar, there's our art across from us right now, and it's been worked out with community. So I don't know how that was done, but I'm here to say, please look into that. And I would wish to see a group that is engaging people who are really interested, like one of our speakers that you complimented for being interested in that way. People who are interested already have a communication going back and forth.
I appreciate that very much. Hang on just a second. Commissioner Peters, did you have any questions?
I do not. Thank you so much for the information and testimony.
Commissioner Buckley.
Thank you, Ms. James. Thanks for the book recommendation. I quickly Googled it on my phone while you were talking. So a summary I'm seeing is the author compares inhabitants of a city to the animal inhabitants of a zoo, which have their survival needs provided for, but the cost of living in a natural environment. Is that an accurate summary of the book? Am I -- do I have the right one that I found?
It fits The Human Zoo.
Yeah.
And he has a quote on the back that I had hoped to read. It says, "There is really no need to escape our cities, but there is a need to transform the urban environment into something more appropriate for its long sufferings, inhabitants."
Okay.
You know, my expectation or desire to see those kinds of natural areas where people are living, that they can go down and outside. The other thing I wanted to comment about small parks and having them be sustainable, they foster community. And community is really important to making the increasingly urban environment more friendly.
All right. Well, thank you for the book recommendation. I will check it out. I devour books, especially nonfiction, so this sounds right up my alley, and especially things about planning. I'll make a recommendation to return the favor to you and to anyone else who's interested. It reminds me, just from the summary I read on, you know, my Google search, it reminds me a little bit of an inverse argument of Jane Jacobs in Life and Death of Great American Cities, also an urban planning classic from the 1960s, of, you know, humans co-evolving with cities, and cities being like an extension of a habitat of a human being. Or it seems like from the description I found from, you know, a random webpage describing the book that I found on Google on my phone in three seconds, that this book might be making the opposite point, that it's like it's an unnatural thing. So I've read just about everything Jacobs has written, and I think she's brilliant. But I'll read this, which might be a good opposing point of view. It's always good to challenge your own assumptions. So Jacobs, Life and Death of Great American Cities. And another more recent, modern writer, probably just a few years ago, Charles Marone, in a book Strong Towns, wrote a book where the entire first chapter is about the co-evolution of human beings with communal and eventually city environments, into an extension of like cities being part of our biological surroundings. I don't know. That's getting pretty intellectual, but I'm into that stuff. You're recommending a book along those same lines, so I thought maybe you would be too. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He talks about how hunter-gatherers started towns east of the Mediterranean, where there were natural fields of barley and wheat, and then towns developed. And in the east, they developed around rice, and in South America around corn. I didn't know that. I was fascinated to hear about that.
Yeah, interesting.
They didn't have to keep wandering to find food and make that their only priority.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that would like to provide any comments on this subject, on our agenda? If not, we will close the public comments, and I just want to express my appreciation for everybody. And I also hope that you feel that the commission is listening and engaged. And I think you also see that there are a lot of trade-offs that we have to confront. We will now turn the commission's discussion to the draft that had been prepared after our previous, I think, four meetings on this issue. And my suggestion would be is that we take A, B, C, and D individually, and begin with A. I know that we've had a chance now, I think for, the commission has had a chance for the last six weeks to look at these two options. As I see them, and the reason that I'm feeling pretty good about these recommendations are that you kind of have, you know, two different things, and I think that that creates flexibility, depending on the development, and I think they both are geared towards additional engagement. I personally really like option two because of how it creates this interactive process. Thoughts by commissioners on the draft of A? I don't know if we lost Commissioner Peters or not. I don't see her on the screen.
I'm still here.
Ah. Did you have anything that you wanted to comment on? If not, I'll turn it over to the rest of the crowd here.
I'd like to hear other comments first, maybe turn back to me after.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. The main thing that I wanted to bring up for discussion is not something I'm opposed to. It's in regards to the maximum amount of points for option two. I think we're saying it's up to 50 points. Understanding that the next step for this would be to go to city council for their approval, and then that it would likely go to staff for their review and editing. I guess my thought is that for the point limit to be removed for option two, for it to be unlimited, with the idea being that that gives the opportunity for city council or for city staff to determine how much emphasis they want to give this community engagement opportunity in the future. But I'm also fine leaving it as is.
Christopher Buckley, did you have your light on on that, or?
I think my light on was on from earlier, but I'll speak to it, actually.
You don't have to.
Well, no, I was going to put it on. I'm sorry. I'm being difficult. Community engagement is really important. It's why we're here. I don't know if I'm comfortable with making the number of points unlimited, just because there's so much other good stuff on the enhanced development menu. And when drafting this, and like even first talking about this idea many months ago, you know, one concern that was expressed by some was, well, we don't want to crowd out the other sustainability items, so I think there should be some cap. 100% is too high to me. 50 points maximum is one-third of the maximum points any project can ever be required to get, which, I don't know, seemed to me as a good starting point of where to be. But I don't know about like 100%. Maybe even more than 50 is the answer, but not 100%.
Commissioner Furman.
You can correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like inherently the points being awarded above and beyond the actual effort to engage the public is what elements that they actually take advantage of, that the public recommends. I think there's inherently, not just inherently, but almost assuredly, the things recommended are going to tie into some of the other pieces within the enhanced development menu, whether it's public art, green building, anyway, any of those initiatives. I don't know that that means I necessarily agree with Commissioner Gribblyonis, but I do, I mean, I do see that sensibility that, I guess it's possible, but I can't imagine a world in which all the recommendations they are going to give, or even probably the majority of them, unless it is, you know. I'm sorry, I'm trying to imagine the world in which their recommendations would fall outside of the other menu items, but would be items that would fit within zoning. But I guess, to be honest, you could leave it, you could leave it at a third, or you could increase it some. The point I'm making is I think you're invariably going to not end up at 100%, but.
Did you have your light on again? Commissioner Gribblyonis.
Thank you, Chair. I guess the other element to the thought of not having a cap to the amount of points for this option is we can't account for what amazing things might come out of this. And by capping the points, in theory, you're capping the incentive to the potential of what even larger aspirational things might come out of the community engagement process.
From my perspective, this is the only thing that I am worried about on this approach. I'm comfortable with this overall recommendation, but I do worry about it cannibalizing other things in the existing point system. So I would be uncomfortable going beyond a third and allowing that sort of flexibility because I am afraid that I -- it seems to me that these are things that are, should be easy for a developer to do. So I don't want them using up all of the points on this, maybe, and beyond, that, to the exclusion of things on the enhanced development menu. Any other thoughts on that? I mean, I guess the question is, what we're trying to do today is figure out, Commissioner Gribblyonis.
Thank you, Chair. I guess I just wanted to put this to rest from my perspective. I'm very comfortable with the 50 points, the same way that removing that limit gives flexibility for it to be adjusted in the future by council and staff. Leaving it at 50 is no different. They could still adjust it however they see fit, so thank you.
Commissioner Kolkmeier.
Yes.
Commissioner Peters has raised her hand.
Okay. Commissioner Peters.
Yeah, thank you. I happen to agree that you don't want to see this come at the expense of some of the other opportunities in the enhanced development menu, and this should be fairly easy to implement. So I agree with you, Chair, in keeping it at the 50 points.
So I guess the question, and this is not a final decision by any means, but for our next meeting, it seems like we would be comfortable leaving this language as it is drafted. Again, you can come with suggested amendments and changes at the subsequent meeting, but for now, it sounds like we're comfortable proceeding with that without objection. Moving to Sub B, actually, I had two things that occurred to me that were probably poorly drafted. I don't know who drafted this, but he did a bad job. First of all, First of all, and this, of course, is the one where we're saying to city council, look, we know that this is gonna take more time for staff. They're gonna have to answer and address and put information out there that's gonna be an additional cost. But we're going on record saying, we think that's a cost worth incurring for the city because it is gonna create greater awareness. But this was drafted as, if you go to the final sentence, therefore recommends the city council direct the city manager to have, I actually think that that is poorly worded upon reflection, because city council doesn't really direct the city manager. The city council enacts ordinances. So I have a suggested change to that, which would be that, and therefore recommends that the city council enact a requirement, that. And that, I think, keeps them a little more in their lane, and I could just, I'm anticipating that there might be a little pushback on that, because, again, as everyone knows, we have a city manager form of government. And then the second change is that I have put the name of the department in incorrectly, or whoever drafted it, I mean, put it in incorrectly. It is not the Department of, it is not the Planning and Zoning Department. It is the Community Planning and Development Department pursuant to 2.08. So I guess if there's not a question or a, yes?
I'm sorry to interject, Chair. Just to let you know, there was a recent rebranding. It's now, the planning department generally is gonna be known as Sustainability and Community Development, or SCD, and the specific department that may be tasked with these types of reviews is just going to be Development Review. So I don't know if that changes the name again, but...
Yeah, I, just from my own point of view, I'm only comfortable referencing what the ordinance actually says. I understand there has been discussion about name changes and whatnot, but I think, correct me if I'm wrong, though, Ms. Danek, what does the ordinance say? Doesn't the ordinance say that the named department is the, is the Community Planning and Development Department under sub three of 2.08? I thought that was the current law.
I'm taking a look at that now. We are doing, just so that the commission's aware, we will be doing a cleanup to reflect the new organizational changes. I believe that ordinance is gonna be set for November 18th. So you all may be on the front end of this, but they're, the correct names are going to be changed this year. But let me, sorry, let me take a moment.
Sure.
Yes, so it currently says the Department of Community Planning and Development, and it looks like, and it's hard to say here, but that chapter has undergone some amendments over the years. My guess is that name or nomenclature was probably from the 90s, just based on the iterations that we've had. So it's completely up to the commission to decide what name you would like to choose, knowing that there will be ordinance amendments forthcoming.
I think we have to use what is the actual legal name at this point. I understand there may be a change in that, but I don't think it's for us, my view is, it's not for us to presume that council will change the law to something else. So if there is not an objection, the next draft, I would suggest, would make those two changes where our recommendation is that city council enact a requirement that the Community and Planning Department make improvement to the city's online resources. Doesn't appear to be an objection, so I'll make those change. Any other thoughts or expansion or further clarification under B that anyone would like Commissioner O'Neil, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Overall. I thought you hit your button, but then the light came on. Is, did you?
I hit my talk button instead of my request button. We're just gonna start talking.
Well, I gotta go to Commissioner Overall first because she technically beat you.
It's like Jeopardy. The Os override each other.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kolkmeier, you said that you do not expect for there to be a vote on this today. Is there a reason why, may I ask?
Well, I think, the reason, I guess, would be to have yet another opportunity for public comment, so it's out there. I had previously suggested that, and I think that has been our practice on these recommendations, to have two hearings in which a written product was available.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you, Chair. I guess I'm wondering if there isn't a reason, or if there is a reason that we couldn't word the budgetary implications to be passed on, is there a reason we aren't passing that on to the developer? Why would that be a city hit?
I don't know if that was supposed to, I think I would invite...
That's for anybody.
Yeah, I would invite others to comment on that. I guess my quick reaction is that what we're talking about here is kind of the whole system of information, and staff having to field calls from multiple developers. So it's not tied to a particular development. It's really the whole scheme of providing information.
Right, and I think I would say to that, that it should be a fee that the developer, they pay plenty of fees for permitting and the planning process and the pre-planning process. Why couldn't this be, informing neighbors be part of that? Why couldn't, I don't know. And maybe this isn't an appropriate place to put that, it just struck me.
Commissioner Buckley.
Furthering that idea from Commissioner O'Neill, I have a question for staff. There are current application fees for just about any planning process that an applicant wants to go through. Do those cover the entirety of the process? Is it possible that those fees could be structured to, like systematically, you know, just by everyone paying a small fraction more, cover whatever additional expenses are incurred? Do we have a system that easily do that?
Right. The current planning and zoning fees cover a very, very small portion of the review cycle. When we go through, review a plat, a site plan, it is both planning and civil review, and it doesn't cover remotely what the staff time incurs to review those projects. We are, it's been a couple of years, and Keith Hensel, who was here last week, he and I are looking at an update, I think, in, on fees in 2025, so we're still kind of working through that. Last time we looked, planning and zoning fees were about 70% of what they charge in the metro area, and then our permitting fees were a little higher. So we're, we charge a little more, we charge less on the site and civil review and more on the building permit review. So we're, we are looking at reevaluating that to actual cover costs. I don't think we'd have a whole lot of development in Lakewood in the future, so actual staff time. But we are putting numbers together at this point in time. The fees are pretty substantial to the review time, staff time.
Yeah, thank you. That's very helpful. Yeah, I think anything that would make our fees go outside the norm of what surrounding jurisdictions charge is probably not desirable from my perspective.
Commissioner Peters.
Yeah, I definitely support the notification within a certain distance, and I wanted to also highlight some of the comments that were on Lakewood Speaks, and I don't want to move too far away from this topic and go into that at this point, but would like the opportunity to do so.
Commissioner Peters, I'm not sure, we're on B. Maybe you don't have that up. Do you have that, are you looking at B, which is the online resources, the opt-in notification?
Okay, yeah.
Do you have thoughts on that? And the most recent question was about whether or not there should be a recommendation that the cost associated with this be borne through application fees.
Yeah, and I, and I didn't, it wasn't clear to me if that's standard or non-standard
I'm sorry, I don't, Mr. Rice, do you have an answer for that, or?
There isn't, the application fee is the application fee. It includes all review. We could, I wouldn't necessarily recommend it if we're looking at raising fees to cover this potential. I think that's one way of doing it. I think adding a, an additional fee for choosing that option might be a little awkward to administer, one thing, and so maybe it's a, it's a fee increase across the board to cover that additional cost if somebody chooses that.
Commissioner Peters.
Yeah, I would agree with that, that it would need to be an increase across the board to average that out, and would be in support of that. I think that notification is very important. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Mr. Rice, did you say that currently Lakewood is 30% less in fees than the City of Denver?
Not the City of Denver. When we did the analysis, we did, I don't know who has the, the fees kind of bounced around. We tried to hit about 80% of the metro area average for both site and civil review and building permit review. I don't know where Denver actually fell, you know, Aurora was high and something and low and something, they were all over the place.
Okay.
So the variations within the communities in the metro area, we were looking at about 80% of the average, and that was several years ago.
Okay. I guess I would think that allowing community members to opt in to a text platform or something like that, or email, or maybe there's options, I don't know, is nominal. I mean, that's not a very, and then it prevents the city from bearing that brunt, and prevents folks from not getting noticed because it costs the city too much money. So I guess I still think that's a valid option, possibly.
Great. Mr. Rice?
Kind of an example with COVID, COVID changes a lot of things. We still hold neighborhood meetings, but the applicant that's holding the neighborhood is required to put together all, and we still provide a virtual option, and they're required to provide all the equipment and so forth on the facilities to do that. So it's, it's not staff doing that, so.
Commissioner Furman.
This may be an obvious question, but just so I'm clear, are we imagining, and this may be too in the weeds to answer either, but are we imagining modifications to the current planning cases system, such that, I mean, because there is that system out there, so is this, are we, are we imagining anything, or are we imagining changes to that, or are we imagining an entirely new system that allows people to do this? Obviously, that changes the cost dramatically, whether it's, I don't even know if it's feasible, but since it already is on the planning cases system, is it?
Well, so that's a good question for Mr. Rice. The, the current system begins reporting at what stage?
At a formal application.
At a formal application. So that really is what makes this difference, is that this would be the first interaction between a property owner and the department. It's the first pre-planning meeting is...
Yeah, what I'm getting at is, there's a system out there, in theory, you could post things earlier into that system that exists.
Right.
My question is, and we may not have it, maybe somebody on the commission does, whether we're talking about using the existing system, changing how it functions, or talking about an entirely new system.
Mm-hmm.
It's, and I don't know how feasible it is to change what gets put onto the planning cases, but anyway.
Yeah, and I'll just share my perspective. My assumption is that the recommendation is, right now, we tell people at the application date. And this was a request to say, what can we do before the application date? So the recommendation is that you should make information available from the very first day that the city has noticed that something may happen on that parcel. And then, I don't see our recommendation going beyond that. Staff then, I think, would say, well, look, this would, the smartest way to do this would be to take our existing system and require, you know, an earlier start date or something. But I would be comfortable leaving that to staff implementation myself. I hope it's an easy fix, but I actually think, and for me, the thing that really is being called out here, though, is not the system as much as it is the staff time. I think that's gonna be the hit, which is that there are a whole bunch of projects that die in the pre-planning process. And I know there's been concerns that if you tell everyone, you know, all these projects have been filed, something's gonna happen on this, you know, people get concerned and whatnot, and then ultimately, it was wasted time for staff to answer those inquiries, wasted time for citizens. And I get that, and I accept that, but I like the idea that at least there will not be a concern that something is six months in a pre-planning process, and no one knew a thing until the application is filed, because at the point the application is filed, staff, hopefully, has done a really good job of making changes, suggesting changes, pointing out flaws, things like that. And at that, that's when we start to hear people saying that, you know, the deal is cooked. Well, it may be, it may be, and it may be for the better. But what we were tasked with is how to get people involved earlier than that point. That's kind of the way I'm thinking about it. So on this particular question that Commissioner O'Neill raised, seems to me we could go a couple of different ways. We could leave it as is, and just leave that to council or staff to deal with it on a budget side, as part of the budget. Maybe the department says, look, you know, you guys just passed this ordinance saying we gotta do this, it's gonna cost an extra $200,000 or something, and staff time, you gotta increase our budget. We could just, I think the way this is drafted, it kind of just pushes to them that. Or we could say something about a recommendation that council authorize specific additional fees as a result of this, but we have heard that they are already in the process of looking at overall fee increases. Commissioner O'Neill.
I think I would just offer to that thought, I appreciate you breaking it down like that because it's helpful for me. I think I would offer that the, the reason that we're being asked to look at ways for community to get involved earlier is to help with transparency, so that there isn't the thought that the books are cooked, the staff's in on it, commission doesn't care, and neither does council. So in my mind, the recommendation in this document maybe is important. If others don't agree, I'm fine with that, too, but I'm curious what folks think, because I think it really puts a fine point on, we think this might be a good idea. It puts it in the hands of council and a conversation with staff, and for staff to look at that further, even though they already are, but that, that we're hearing the community in that they don't feel heard, and they don't believe, and they don't trust. And so I think maybe that's just a subtle tone that nods to that in a way that's helpful.
Commissioner Buckley.
I like the wording that the resolution has right now. It acknowledges directly in words that this will take more time, this will take more resources. I think everyone understands resources to mean money in this case. And so it shows that, just on our half, our behalf, making the recommendation to city council, that we're aware of that, and, you know, that we just think that the goal of transparency and the goal of increasing community engagement is, is worth whatever incremental resources that is. But the language also leaves it vague enough where it would obviously be on council as the body that has the authority to make a budget and vote on it. as the body that has the authority to make a budget and vote on it and improve it every year to figure out where those resources come from, you know? We're not the budget audit board, we're not the city council, we don't do budgets. I think our wording goes far enough and not too far, so I like it.
Commissioner Peters?
I support Commissioner O'Neil's recommendation. I think it would, it would address some of the nuances and the concerns that have been expressed, and city council is already looking at that, and it would just give encouragement.
So, we're at one of these moments where we have potentially contrary notions on how to word this, so I would entertain a motion, and it could either be a motion to make no changes, or it could be a motion to make a specific change, and then we can discuss that and vote on it. Commissioner O'Neil?
I'll attempt to make a motion to add verbiage to the existing draft stating a recommendation to, a recommendation to add additional fees to the developer in upcoming developments to provide outreach to community.
Is there a second? I'm waiting on Commissioner Peters because I thought she might second.
Yes, I would second. I might suggest streamlining in a recommendation to increase developer fees to cover outreach to the community.
And, okay, so I think we essentially have the motion and the second. The question I have on that is, do we want to tie it specifically to B or generically to community outreach? Because it sounded like the motion was a little broader than B. If you call, if we're calling on the city council, we would recommend that the city council authorize additional application fees for community engagement. That seems a little broader than the particular thing in B, and that may be the intent, but I would feel a little more comfortable if it was specifically narrowed down to B, if we were going to put it in here. Commissioner O'Neil?
I think my intent was for it to be attached to B because we're talking about the cost implication to the city.
So I'm going to do this. I would ask if Commissioner Peters would pull your second back, and Commissioner O'Neil would draw your motion, and I may take a stab at what I think you're trying to get at, and see if that works. You don't have to, but we can either vote on this more general statement, or we can further refine it, but that's the most expeditious way to do it. Is that all right with you, Commissioner Peters?
I'll defer to Commissioner O'Neil.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes, I'll withdraw.
Okay, the second's withdrawn, and the main motion is withdrawn. I move that in the fifth line of B, after process and before however, we insert, we further recommend to city council that they, that, I'm sorry, an additional application fee be required in support and furtherance of this subsection B. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Commissioner O'Neil has second. People's thoughts, does that capture it, or does it not?
Can you read it again, please?
Sure. On line five, after process and before however, the commission further recommends that city council add an additional application fee in furtherance and support of this subsection I'm sure it can be phrased better, but I'm just, that's, I was hoping that that captured it, but how are commissioners feeling about that?
It's to support subsection B, not in regard to directly mentioning outreach?
Right, so that was the distinction. The first motion was a general, city council impose addition application, additional application fees to support community outreach, and, and I'm not really comfortable with that because we haven't defined what those things would be spent on, whereas this particular section says, we think there's going to be additional costs. The staff is going to field a bunch of phone calls that they don't currently have to field, and we accept that, or we recommend that the development community should bear the cost of that additional staff time.
But I also heard staff mentioning that it's better to just roll it into a fee increase.
All right, so Commissioner Peters, the way it's been described, is that consistent with what you were saying you wanted, or inconsistent?
It, it didn't mention just a general fee increase to cover those costs. It seems like it could be streamlined to, to say that. It's a little wordy, and it's hard to clearly grasp it.
Commissioner O'Neil?
So I think if you read the first sentence, the planning commission understands that there will be budgetary implications to expanding public notice and encouraging more public engagement in the pre-planning process. So I think that subsection B is specific to more community outreach, and I think this is just stating that we want the development community to kick in on that. So I think it does say what, because the subject matter is that topic.
Commissioner Furman?
Forgive my ignorance if I'm misunderstanding everybody, but it does seem like the main goal here is that there's an additional cost with creating the notifications, changing the system, whatever that change is, and what we're trying to do is clarify that we recommend the developers pay for that direct additional cost, which makes, I'm fine with that approach. I would say the general statement I'm not as comfortable with, only because of, I get the intent, and I don't necessarily disagree with you, Commissioner Peters, but I think that is harder to quantify and harder to capture, and less likely to, to be easy to, to swallow, sort of, I don't know, I'm trying to think of the best way of phrasing it, but whereas it's easy enough to say, these are the things that are going to have to do to increase notification, it's going to take X hours, and, I mean, you can look at where the fee would go. It seems more, I don't know, more quantifiable, I guess, keeping it subject to this, but so, I would support this narrow interpretation, whether or not it needs to be reworded slightly, but.
I also think the intent, at least in my mind, the intent is to show community that the city is asking more of development, and I think that's a big complaint of community members, is that we're not, they don't know what's going on, we're not communicating, the city's not communicating well, and council boards, commissions aren't helping that. So I don't know if there should be additional, a couple of words that, I don't know. I mean, I, it starts to get maybe a little bit too in the weeds, and maybe it's not necessary. I just, I was, I was trying to put some nuance into it to make it...
Well, sure. What about this suggestion? Would you take, would you remove your second?
I remove my second.
And I'll remove the motion, and I would suggest that everyone will have another two weeks before, and maybe give some thought to the specific words. I'm always more comfortable if they are drafted in advance rather than on the fly. I was just trying to accommodate what I thought was a, you know, a good suggestion, but is everyone comfortable with leaving this draft for the next meeting the same, and then the expectation will be that one or more people, maybe none, will come forward and say, I would like that section to be rewritten in the following way. Is everyone all right with that? Commissioner Peters?
Yeah, thanks. It'd be nice to have some red lines so that there'd be an opportunity to flag that for comment. So I guess I would rather see an edit to it than leave it as it is, and if that's going with the recent proposal as you had listed it, then I would support that.
We don't have a motion on the floor. Would you like to make a motion?
I don't have that wording. It's nice if we can see things written out, like if, makes it harder to work.
Well, what we're suggesting is that you would write it, and you could see what you had written, and then you can bring it to us. That's kind of the, the thought. If we're not able to finalize it today, then, then if you would like to see something in this, you could write that sentence and bring that to the commission. Does that make sense?
Yes, and it wouldn't be available in time for Lakewood Speaks, and so I guess I would be in support of either, either proposal by yourself or Commissioner O'Neil, and having those as red lines to the document when this is available for public input and comment.
So I'm going to ask you to make a motion, if you'd like to make a motion, because we do not have a motion on the floor.
Well, I would like some help to make that motion. Commissioner O'Neil, can you either remake the motion, or share with me the language again that you had initially provided?
I...
Commissioner O'Neil?
Thank you. I don't, I didn't write down what I said, I was very much winging it, and not very well, so I don't know how to help. I think the intention is, I think, to continue the discussion at the next meeting with whoever wants to add red lines to this existing draft, to have the opportunity to do that, because I don't, honestly, I know what my intention is, I don't think my words are very good, and so I would appreciate some time to think about it a little bit more, but I do realize that then that will not be on Lakewood Speaks, unless we put it on Lakewood Speaks and then wait to have the meeting, and, I mean, I don't know. Sorry, I don't know how to help.
Anything further, Commissioner Peters?
I didn't write down either one of them, and so... Have to go back to... Okay, so let's, let's see, take a stab. The planning commission expects that some staff time will be diverted to addressing questions and comments on projects that will never proceed or will be substantially changed in the pre-planning process. However, the planning commission believes city council should prioritize notice and information sharing by city staff, and therefore recommends that city council, and then I know you had some edits, and to have cities' online resources, and then maybe at the very end, direct the city planning and zoning department make improvements to the city's online resources regarding development, the online resources and outreach regarding development, and, and assess increase in fees to support that.
So, Commissioner, we operate by the making of motions. Would you like to make a motion? And what would that motion be?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, I guess I'm not making a motion at this time because my screen and my computer are locked up, so I can't get back to that page. Let me ask you a question. In regards to the planning department name and the changes in regard to the city manager that you've proposed, will those be captured in red lines that will be available on Lakewood Speaks for review prior to the next meeting?
I made no such proposal. I merely said that what the existing department name is in the municipal code should be reflected in this document, because as of today, 2.08 Roman numeral three makes reference to a department, and that department is called the Community Planning and Development Department. Ms. Stanek had suggested that there may be something coming before council that would involve a reorganization. It's just not something that is currently in our municipal code.
Okay, but you had looked at changing language in regard to directing city manager, that there was an edit, that you were removing that language.
Yeah, I, and I had asked if anyone had any objection to that, and no one had an objection to it, we'll, we'll go back to it.
No, no, my question for you, and this is just a question, it's a procedural question, will that edit that nobody had any objections to show up as a red line and be available on Lakewood Speaks?
It will not be a red line, but it will be available on Lakewood Speaks.
So we'll just have a clean, an updated, clean draft?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
If nothing further on B, or Commissioner Buckley?
I'm just going to make a general statement, that I always find it challenging to draft things on the fly, and appreciate having an opportunity of, you know, a few weeks till the next meeting to, to think about them, and I think we've talked about this subject on B, what the possible changes are enough, and it's just a matter of getting the wording right, so I'm more than comfortable with someone who wants to do it, draft something, and we can consider a motion to do that with very good, well-thought-out wording at the next meeting, and, and if we adopt the final resolution, then even if it's not on Lakewood Speaks, I'm very comfortable with that, since we've talked about it so much here, and it is, I think, not a matter of the idea, just of the words.
All right, we're moving on to C, and under C is where... And under C is where we've inserted this notion of a specific criteria for properties that are adjacent to city parks. Now, I will tell you that while I support this, I think that it is something that is missing in our current code. I see a reason why it would be relevant in the future to maybe have this criteria. I myself have some questions about how well this should be defined, how narrow, how broad. The language that we have at this moment, which I would appreciate folks' comments on, talks about adding the requirement that if it's adjacent to the park, you have to look at the habitats. And the wording right now is demonstrable effects on park flora and fauna. But I do not claim any, I don't know that this is the best wording. And if this is something that folks, I mean, this has obviously been out there for a while. Everyone's seen it for a week. So I had hoped that maybe someone, if they had a problem or concern or an improvement, they had already thought about it. But if not, that's okay, too. We can deal with that next time as well. But Commissioner Buckley?
Thank you. Yes, this is something that people brought up even in public comments tonight and I think on Lakewood Speaks, and so that's all very good. My hesitation around it is that it does seem a little bit not thoroughly thought out. I think demonstrable effects is pretty vague. How much of an effect? You know, how do we measure a threshold of what the effect is? Who's doing the demonstrating? Like, where does that burden lie? And what's the process and procedure for anyone to dispute that demonstration and say, well, no, I can demonstrate something else? We get into a lot of details here that just, these two sentences don't cover. And so before I'd really support it, I'd like to understand a lot more details. And I've given a little bit of thought in the past few days to how to beef this up. But this is not something I feel like I have very strong expertise in or really good ideas of how to make it less vague. I just, I know it's too vague for my liking right now.
Commissioner Furman?
Yeah, I think the issue is that it can be taken, I'm going to take it to the extreme. It can be taken anyway, right? Because of arguably, development could have a demonstrable effect that's positive on a park if it were to, say, clean up some aspect of, so it is, I think it's just, it opens the door to very sort of arbitrary interpretations of whether or not a project has demonstrable effect. I don't, I don't want to put the responsibility off onto someone else, but without some quantifiable thing that I think may be difficult to achieve, I think the next best thing is to decide what body should decide if a project represents a harm to a natural resource. You know, again, people will likely complain when that body says, we don't see a big issue. But at the end of the day, choosing some expert to determine whether or not it has a particularly negative effect may be the way to go, since otherwise you're going to have a difficult time deciding what this, I don't know. And even that is challenging, so.
Commissioner Overall?
This is truly just a question for my colleagues here. Would it make it better to phrase it as the developer has, let's say, or, sorry, the, I lost my place. The criteria should evaluate the, or should review the planned mitigation on potential impacts on flora and fauna. So that kind of shifts the burden on the developer to say, this is, or anticipated impacts on flora and fauna, sort of moves the onus a bit. And then makes it clearer that the assumption is the impact would be negative and therefore mitigation is where we're talking. I don't know that it's always, that development's always negative, certainly based on the comments today. It sounds like the public opinion is that development is generally negative on flora and fauna, but does that help at all?
Yeah, and I would, my reaction to that is that I appreciate both of these two points because I think this is missing something obvious, which is, we are concerned about the negative effects. So I think that concept's got to be added. And I also very much like the idea of there being also the question of mitigation, because that's pretty typical when we say, you know, if this, then what, as part of the evaluation. I'm not as concerned about this being kind of too amorphous because it's tied to developments that require a major site plan, and there already are a number of criteria. What this recommendation is saying is add another one. And then the question would be, how do we define that? But that would be something that the zoning code in telling staff to evaluate major site plans, that would be an added criteria. That's kind of the notion. And there isn't, I think it would be treated not as, you know, you have to go get an outside consultant or this is an appeal process or whatever else. It's just one more criteria. And the staff could say, they didn't meet this criteria, and then they can appeal. Or the staff could say, yeah, we think they demonstrated that there is no adverse effect. Or the staff could say, yeah, there's an adverse effect, but we believe they have mitigated. Commissioner Gribbleonis?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I really like the intent of this item. I'm thinking about how this fits within the typical development process or which team member on the developer's side would be qualified to evaluate the effect of local flora and fauna. I was just thinking through it. I suppose a developer would bring on an ecologist to do a study of the local site, possibly. And I guess, without more specifics tied to this, is the developer's ecologist the best person to look out for the community at large in regards to this item? So I think there's just, there's good intent here, but I think it's kind of ambiguous and I'm not sure necessarily, I'm just unsure with the specific details of this as it currently sits.
Commissioner Furman?
It's an interesting idea about the ecologist or, you know, the, I mean, it gets burdensome to imagine an environmental impact study, but maybe that is where you end up is some version of an environmental impact study. But I think the, the sort of what ends up being the two-step process of being able to mitigate it is good. I still go back to the idea of who decides what those issues are. And while I appreciate your idea that it is one of these qualifications that they review, it's still challenging unless you start to identify things like, while they may meet the sort of standard concern of drainage off their site, perhaps when you're adjacent to a park, there becomes specific, you know, you're not changing the location of the drainage. I mean, you still need something to evaluate. And whether it's, I forget what Boulder has when it comes to the access to sunlight, that kind of thing, or redirecting of drainage that is above and beyond standard evaluation for a site. But I think there has to be something, I don't know, there has to be a way of determining it, whether it's an impact study or you have a bunch of qualifications that are above and beyond a standard requirement, like I said, access to sunlight, redirection of drainage, impacts on migration, whatever that may be.
Commissioner Buckley?
I wanted to ask Mr. Rice, it's kind of a similar question to what Commissioner Gribbleonis was talking about, you know, who on the developer's side would evaluate this kind of thing, maybe the hibernecologist. Who on the city staff's side that the city currently has employed could evaluate this? You know, do we need more staff for it? Or is this an expertise that we already possess within planning or engineering?
Getting into, how do I say this, organisms, living organisms? I don't think the city necessarily has staff that could do that, right? So my first thought is, not shifting the burden, community resources may have somebody on staff that I'm not aware of. I know we have a city forester, so we could do evaluation of trees and so forth. I don't know that we have a city biologist, ecologist that could give that type of review. So if it was something specific, say a wetland, we do use the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer as a referral agency. If it's a floodplain, we work with urban drainage. In my time here, there has been one project that we specifically referred to, the Colorado Parks and Wildlife, and we had one of their biologists come out and give us an analysis of what an applicant had put together. So I'm still thinking that through. There is no one on staff on site, so maybe we were look at or look to state agencies to do an analysis of something that the applicant were to put together.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. That's helpful perspective. And maybe just for us to think about this, too, that this is, you know, a lot of extra staff burden potentially if we don't even have anyone on staff who's qualified to do this kind of evaluation. Really speaks to the need, in my mind, to really define this a lot better. And preferably, I'd very much like to see whatever standards we would want to consider adding be very objective and quantifiable, kind of unquestionable. You know, if it's just something that's a little bit fuzzy that, you know, well, an ecologist says this could be a concern, I just, I wonder how it can be enforced easily and practically by staff. And then maybe you get into an issue of like, we have this, you know, standard on the books and we already have a lot of citizens saying, not always correctly in my view, but we have lots of people who feel strongly that, you know, staff already ignores lots of criteria that are on the book. You know, if you have something that's just so vague and hard to interpret, well, you're going to get that criticism even more. And I think that would be something we would want to stay away from. So, yeah, I think we need to tread very carefully here. If we do something like this at all, it needs to be very, very well thought through, defined, objective, quantifiable, pretty indisputable.
So I'm hearing that there may be discomfort in including this as a recommendation? Commissioner O'Neill?
I think the intention of including it is important because it is something that is brought up by the community a lot. But I do think that it is a breeding ground for disbelief and whose, you can make a statistic say anything, you can find, you know, ecologists that says this is good and one that says this is a bad, you know, addition or removal. So I think it does not only place further burden on staff of hours that they don't have people to fill. Additionally, then, it's the burden of that argument of, can it be believed? Will it be believed? It's just an additional, and I'm not saying that to remove it necessarily, but I think it's, I think it's dangerous for that reason.
Commissioner Furman?
I feel like if, like some of the other items, we were kicking it for people to think about and perhaps draft something, that it's also the possibility that it can remain until next time, at which point we either get rid of it or someone has provided a draft of something that is reasonable and quantifiable, perhaps. I don't, I mean, I can't promise that I can come up with that, but it seems like everyone is in favor of the concept. The issue is how you execute it without, you know, significant extra burden in a way that is both transparent and quantifiable.
Is your light on again? Commissioner O'Neill?
So I have a question for staff, and I'm curious what other commissioners think. Because I had my light on earlier and then turned it off as Commissioner Furman was speaking because my recommendation was for a full impact analysis. When near a park specifically, if we're going to talk about park overlay, which I realize this isn't necessarily specific to that. With the way that state laws and federal laws are moving, though, toward those sustainable benchmarks, it does seem, I guess this is a question, is it unreasonable to be asking developers to perform environmental impact studies for major site plans? Is that cost prohibitive? Is that, does it prevent developments from happening? Are other cities doing it? All of those questions for, I think, Mr. Rice, and then I'd be curious of what other folks on commission think of that.
Mr. Rice?
I think that you could get a lot of different answers. So requiring an environmental analysis, you, it will be an additional cost for the developer and they'll figure it into their pro forma and figure out whether they can move forward with their project or not. Defining what that analysis includes, so I think everybody's familiar with the National Environmental Policy Act, right? So that requires a certain process. I actually worked for the State of Washington for a bit, and they had the State Environmental Policy Act, something similar scaled down, they applied it. Different counties, it was pushing pace per through the process to get through that review. I actually, the county I worked for, there was a gentleman, well, I won't go into details. He, the State of Washington had an appeal process through that. There was timeframes and so forth, and he appealed every project Friday at 5:00 p.m. He would come in, lay his appeal down, and appealed every project that came through the county, just because he could. So the county commissioners added a fee. It was a significant fee, but it, he had to be more selective on what projects he appealed and didn't peel. It wasn't his own money that he was actually using, which was a little easier on his wallet. So, and there were some good things in that act. So we could require an environmental analysis. What are we analyzing? You could take, you know, Commissioner Furman said earlier that development next to a park could be a positive thing, it'd improve something. My initial thought was, you have an old industrial site next to a park, it's paved, you're taking up a lot of the asphalt, and you're adding back, say, 20% of that open space or that green area. So it could be an improvement, and there you're actually, whether it's natural or not because the site's been modified, but there's going to be something living there. So how does that come into play? And it's still in an urban environment, so you cut down a tree and you replace it with several others. So it, there needs to be some direction on what you want the analysis to do. And I, I'm not familiar enough with the State of Colorado laws if there's an environmental analysis for specific projects.
Commissioner Furman?
Sorry, my light was still on. But I will say, you know, like, it's easy enough to quickly look up the cost of a Phase One environmental assessment, right? And it seems like it's not outside of the realm of possibility to require a Phase One. If anybody can look it up, the prices tend to range in the low thousands.
Commissioner Buckley?
Thank you. Yeah, Commissioner Furman, I think those Phase One environmental analyses are usually looking for hazardous chemicals. Like, I'm familiar with, like, gas stations and so forth, former gas station sites or maybe former industrial sites, really looking, it's very narrowly focused on, my understanding is, like, chemical pollution in the soil, maybe more than flora and fauna. Is that right?
Commissioner Furman?
My understanding is health hazards. I, beyond that, whether they look at impacts by the design, by the plan, they go beyond health hazards and what is defined as health hazard, I would have to talk to environmental.
Right. Yeah, and the studies, like, those Phase One studies I've seen, too, in the Phase One environmental site assessments, I believe they're also kind of backwards looking. They're looking at pollution and hazards that may exist on the site because of past activities. They're not really forward-looking of like, what few They're not really forward-looking of, like, what future activities will be or, other than, like, you have to mitigate it, you have to clean it up if it's bad enough, right? So I don't know if that quite hits the mark of what we're talking about here. Maybe, maybe we want to require it, I don't know. Maybe, you know, maybe if you are redeveloping a gas station, it makes sense. I don't know if it makes sense in any site next to a park, though, where that kind of history of pollution may not have happened. More broadly, I wanted to take, step back and take a different, make a different statement. If we're talking about adding something like a National Environmental Policy Act analysis as a requirement of anything in our zoning code, or like California or Washington State have, like, their mini NEPA, like, state requirements for that, and I want to be very sensitive to, you know, the community who came in here tonight and has concerns about the environment around parks and habitat. I think a full-blown, like, NEPA-style study is overkill and is a bad idea, and any inclusion of that would be enough to make me vote no on this entire recommendation. I am a very solid firm no against adding that. I think the, this is demonstrable, there have been studies I've read about this in states like California where the sequel laws are very strong. It has been used to obstruct needed development and redevelopment for years, sometimes decades. You know, one thing that the public who came in here tonight did not talk a lot about is the fact that we have a housing crisis, and we have a housing crisis because the Denver metro area over, you know, the past decade and a half has systematically underbuilt homes by tens of thousands, and right now we're in a situation where we need a lot more housing. And, you know, it's not hard to find people out there in the community who understand that and understand the economic implications and realities of that, and who are advocating and asking that we, that we build more housing and that we fix our supply crunch. And just kind of the nature of the task we were given tonight did not, like, maybe invite those sorts of advocates out as much as invited out the advocates who are concerned about a very specific situation next to a very specific park. But I think we have to keep in mind an overall balance of things. And, you know, in a housing supply crunch, do I support a policy that, in the few states that have tried it, has overwhelmingly been shown to have a primary effect of not so much protecting the environment, but just stopping housing construction? If we put something like that in this resolution, I'm not just a no, I'm voting hell no.
So what is the will of the commission on this one? Would, is someone interested in making a motion at this point to remove it? Or, in the absence of that, I would suggest that we further contemplate and revisit it at our next meeting. But what is the will of the body? Well, you're going to force my hand. If, if no one has an opinion, then I'm going to make a motion that, that this remain as drafted and be reconsidered at our next meeting. Is there a second? Commissioner O'Neill, seconds. Any discussion? Commissioner Furman?
As I was stating before, I would, yeah, I'd rather leave it and come up with something. I would state this. I find a non-quantifiable arbitrary version of this as dangerous as requiring onerous testing. Both create the opportunity for people to prevent housing. So I don't disagree with you, Stephen, or Commissioner Buckley, sorry. But I think we need to make sure we are not going either way, where we create something onerous or create something that is so arbitrary that it allows people to get a hold of it and use it to stop development based on something we can't quantify.
Any other comments? Then I would ask you to vote on whether or not to leave Section C as drafted for our next meeting, with the understanding that there will be opportunities to amend at that point. Are they not? Hang on. Do I have to start voting? There it is. Commissioner Peters, thumbs up or thumbs down?
I'll support.
Okay. Then, display. Not everyone has voted. Who has not voted? Oh. I don't think I can vote for Commissioner Peters. I will simply indicate, for the record, that, that passes unanimously, seven yeses, no nos. So that's what we're going to do with C for the time being. Let's move to D. You know, D, based upon our discussion last time, was really meant to say, we don't have another specific criteria, and we certainly heard, and there seemed to be consensus, that a general, comprehensive, universal overlay doesn't make sense. But we encourage the city council to give this further consideration. So it's a bit of a punt, no question about it. But the question is, do we want to keep this general statement in? Do we want to modify it? Do we want to remove it? Commissioner, overall?
I like it.
Okay. Short and sweet. Anyone else have any thoughts? Commissioner Buckley?
I'm going to go with an objective and quantifiable idea here. This is inspired by some public comment we heard tonight of the discussion about buffers around parks. In general, we already have landscaping standards. You know, the idea could be, perhaps, we require, you know, additional landscaping to shield, you know, between a park and, say, a industrial, commercial, or mixed-use zone and, and a park. I think that this could be quantifiable. I just had the idea tonight from public comment. Increasing the amount of tree replacement, for instance, could be a quantifiable way. You know, right now, if you remove a tree, well, the first priority is you have to attempt to save it if it's a specimen tree, but if you can't, then there's a tree replacement ratio, like, next to a park, you could increase that. You know, we could require biodiversity of the plantings that are, are put back. I think those kinds of things are possible ideas. I did just think of this tonight, so I'm just kind of floating it for maybe general discussion. I don't think I'm comfortable making a motion right now because I haven't had time to really think through the exact wording, so I won't try to do that. But I'd be interested to hear other people's thoughts, and I, this may be a thing that I assign myself to work on some wording for next time on that would relate to increasing the landscaping standards specifically around certain zone types that are adjacent to parks, just to give that sense of a buffer and a little bit of extra seclusion, especially if it's next to a zone that allows some more intense uses.
Commissioner Furman?
Just a quick question for Commissioner Buckley. Are you suggesting the landscaping or planting in lieu of or in addition to some sort of additional setback or that sort of thing?
Commissioner Buckley?
I think I'm envisioning a landscaping that could be on the private property or with permission and approval of the city in the site plan development process on the park property that goes above and beyond in requiring additional landscaping compared to what would ordinarily be required on a site that is not park-adjacent.
I see Mr. Rice moving.
And I would like to add, my comment, as the group that's reviewing this, I wouldn't recommend anything off-site. So the, the site plan deals with a property at hand, even though it's adjacent to a park, goes into negotiation with parks. I would, I would contain any recommendation to the site under review not adjacent to.
All right. Thanks for that suggestion. I would comment that I have, I thought one of the most important things in this sub-D was our discussion from the last study session about the difficulty of coming up with universal conditions, additional conditions and criteria for parks. The notion of being adjacent to a park and being especially sensitive to habitat seemed to be the only one, to me, that was maybe pulled out. But otherwise, some general rule that applies to all parks that relates to buffer, landscaping, or biodiversity, or something else, I'm very concerned about because I just think every park situation is unique. So I actually thought that was one of the important concepts in this that I liked, which was an acknowledgement. I mean, it's, it's a statement to council that we don't recommend that you do those sorts of things. Now, I'm, I'm hearing there are some ideas that maybe we do want to float, but I think we need to grapple with that basic issue first. Commissioner Furman?
First, preface this by saying, I'm not necessarily saying I agree with Commissioner Buckley, but it feels like it's already nuanced by the suggestion that the buffer is in relationship, if I remember what you said correctly, in relationship to commercial or multifamily development.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yeah, I would, what I have in mind to draft would probably apply to something like the mixed-use commercial or industrial zones near parks, and so that kind of nuances it by a classification that already exists with what's the zoning district that's, you know, objective and easily identifiable. And again, like, if, you know, there's a requirement to plant additional trees or shrubs or whatever, like, you know, you can somehow calculate that, right? So, again, I'm sorry I don't have it, you know, fully fleshed out. It's, it's an idea I had tonight. I, I think I still agree with some of the language that's in here. Like, we said, the planning commission does not recommend establishing universal park-adjacent overlay districts. I think I agree with that. I don't think we need a zoning overlay just to put a requirement in the landscaping section that, you know, you, you increase the plantings by so much if it's next to a park. I think that's just a text amendment to the existing landscaping standards. It's not as complicated as creating a whole new zone district or zone overlay.
So getting the sense of the commission, would we be comfortable allowing this to remain as it is and come back with other thoughts at our next meeting? Or would the preference be to remove it? Commissioner, overall?
I move to keep this as is and discuss it as is during our next meeting.
That is a proper motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, we will vote. Start voting. And Commissioner Peters? Do we still have Commissioner Peters? Commissioner Peters might have dropped off, but there are six voting yes, no voting no, and therefore, that motion passes. Now, oh, we're getting close. In terms of this particular draft, is there anything else, any other concepts that you have been thinking about over the last many years, decades? Commissioner, overall?
The hour is late, and I, I would be remiss, though, if I didn't just mention, I know I'm new to this, I've not been, greater minds have been thinking about this for much longer than I, but as a threshold matter, if nine-tenths of the pre-applications are weeded out before they get to the application period, by this attempt of transparency, are we risking possibly flooding the public with more information than they ever need to know, wasting our scarcity resources, and possibly chilling development because we're adding these layers of requirement to developers that may just be testing it out? You know, testing the waters of what if this? Again, I, I don't think this is a question for necessarily discussion today, but it's just something that crosses my mind.
Commissioner Buckley?
Thank you. Yeah, reaction to that, I, I think that's a valid concern. Thank you for bringing it up. I'll chew on it for the next couple of weeks. I had a question for Mr. Rice. This question is also inspired by the first person, Mr. Durth, who spoke this evening. He, he spoke a little bit about, you know, parking and traffic issues, and then, so thinking specifically about, you know, traffic. I know we have a public improvements ordinance that allows the city to exact upon developers in certain situations, a requirement to make improvements inside the public right-of-way to public infrastructure. I wondered if you could walk us through a little bit the scope and extent of what you can require developers to do under that ordinance and kind of how its limits are defined, with the idea of thinking, like, specifically, my idea was, you know, for the EDM idea, if there's a, some nearby nexus of a transportation issue that goes a little bit beyond what the public improvements can require, or maybe it's a drainage issue or anything like that, you know, is that something that is a community suggestion that could be incorporated in the enhanced development menu, or is that, like, something we maybe could add some other recommendation here, too, since, you know, there hasn't been a case yet, I've sat on, I guess, where, you know, someone hasn't been concerned in some way about traffic, right? So it's, it's probably going to be a common feedback when, you know, people are using this enhanced development menu, proactive public engagement idea. So let's just understand at a high level, you know, what are developers already required to do about the public improvements ordinance, and maybe what's, what's beyond that and not included in that public improvements ordinance, so that, you know, help us understand that distinction, so that we can consider maybe what else we put in some of these suggestions we're drafting.
Mr. Rice?
Right. And I think I'll start with a response. I think it's actually two, two kind of separate issues, and then Lauren can weigh in if she wants or she needs to. So public improvement, so there, if a site generates a need and it's a public need, it can be included in that improvement. So there, there are lots of things, and I'll come back to that point and talk about that. If there is something the community comes forward as this process and perceives a need, a traffic issue, and it's off-site, several blocks away, I don't think we would be able to include it in the public improvement agreement. So there are things that are redevelopment of a site that can be included in that agreement, and then there are things that either are kind of more amorphous, or maybe the neighborhood thinks maybe needs to be included in that agreement, but legally, we couldn't include those in there. Public improvement agreements can deal with drainage, roads, sidewalks, trails. If there is, we're, we're looking at something, and I can't think of the specific example off the top of my head, but including a park improvement is actually part of that public improvement. That typically doesn't happen, but I think the, the developer is, the arrangement that community resources has worked out, they're actually going to include a public park improvement as part of that PI as well. So it's typically limited to site and civil. We don't get a lot of inclusions from parks and so forth, so that's typically it. I'm probably missing a lot of things. There is the option for a development agreement, something the developer could agree to that would accompany a site plan, but that's a different process, and it's, it's not, it's a, it's a separate agreement that the developer and the city sign into. Does that get your, get a response to your question?
Yeah. So I guess in general, the answer is the, the public improvements agreement, like, the, the legal extent of what that can cover is generally the site itself. Is that right?
Generally, yes. You could do something in the right-of-way, i.e., requires a new traffic signal, right? So that's off-site, but it's, it's adjacent to the site, it, it requires that.
Right. And that's going to be only warranted by an engineering study and so forth, so, yeah.
Right.
Okay. And then the developer agreements, where the developer agrees to something additional off-site, maybe because there's large impacts, like, give some examples of, like, why, like, what's in it for the developer to agree to that? Sounds at first blush just like extra cost, right? What?
And Commissioner, I, I don't want to dissuade you from pursuing this, but I think we're getting kind of... getting kind of far afield from pre-application community engagement. I understand, I think where you're going is, if things are going to be addressed later, maybe we don't need to address them earlier, but if they are not addressed later, then we should address them earlier. Is there a way to refine that a little bit?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the scope of what we have right now, so I can better understand the possible scope of something we add that is earlier, or if something additional maybe already fits into the framework we've drafted within the, you know, community suggestions within the EDM.
Yeah, and I do think on the enhanced development menu options, I mean, that really is taking some of those issues potentially and moving them up earlier in the process.
Right, exactly.
Do you think that that's sufficient for now, or is there some additional idea that you'd like us to consider as it relates to those sorts of developer obligated improvements?
I think I'm okay now. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Commissioner overall, I think your light is still on, but I didn't know if it was a second time. So is there anything else that anyone on the commission would like to see in a subsequent draft at this point? Obviously, you still have the opportunity to bring that to us next time, but if we're comfortable, it sounds like we've kind of worked through the draft, and with the few changes we've talked about, it'll be back out there for another couple of weeks for everyone to chew on. Now I'm going to quickly go to the next item. Thank you. We'll go from there to item number four, general business. And here, we've just got some updates, and we'll try to get everybody out of here pretty quickly. But first, comp plan update. Just a general overview. It's, the indication we've gotten from staff now is that they are going to try to accelerate the timetable a bit. Originally, there was a thought that it might be fall of 2025, but I think spring of 2025 is what we're now told to expect in terms of a comp plan coming to us. And I think that that's very good news. I know everyone knows about the advisory groups, and those, I think, are done for the time being, and there may be a subsequent one in November or so. I would also note that we have a particular request from staff. So Roger Wadenall and Kristi Ivanoff?
Ivanoff.
Ivanoff. Please apologize to Kristi. I mispronounce it at least 50% of the time. Their request is, they would like to hear from commissioners if there is some issue that you want them to specifically get community feedback and input on. Ultimately, it's this commission that will vote on the comp plan. So I think what they want to know is, when they prepare the plan and bring it to us, have the big questions that are on your mind been addressed? Are there specific questions that you want the public to be asked or that you want answered and that you think need to be addressed before you would be comfortable voting on the comp plan? It's kind of big ideas, not minutia, big ideas, big picture. And I would suggest just a handful of them. They are asking that you email to Mr. Rice no later than September 9. He will compile those, he will get them to the comp plan staff. So that's yet another task for you. Secondly, they wanted us to know that they will be going to Sider Days, October 4, 5, and 6, and engaging the public in the comp plan and where it is and getting feedback. They also plan to have an open house on October 10. They, it's not finalized, but probably 4 to 7 p.m. And then finally, they are planning on giving an update to city council on October 14. So those are comp plan updates. Any questions about any of that? Great. In terms of our schedule, we would be meeting next on September 4. And at this point, I believe the only thing on our agenda will be the community engagement recommendations, which we'll be inviting further public comment on and commission discussion. And then I want to note an unusual request that we've gotten from city council, which you may or may not be aware of. When we gave our recommendations having to do with gas stations, one of our recommendations was that there should be at least one Level 3 charger at every gas station. And the question was asked by several city council members, "Well, you know, that's all well and good, but what's the bigger plan? What are we doing in terms of rolling out a charging infrastructure throughout the city?" So Councilor Rhine, and it was supported by full council, asked us to provide recommendations related to the electric vehicle infrastructure implementation plan. Now, that sounds like a huge ask, but I have very good news for you, which is that not only Mr. Rice, who is always up on all of these issues, will be involved, but Jonathan Wachtel, they have already convened a number of staff discussions and have really created a framework for how they would suggest going forward. And put on your calendar, we believe, October 9, maybe an appearance by Mr. Wachtel and, of course, Mr. Rice, anyone else they want to bring, that will help us better understand that issue and then make a determination as to whether any particular recommendations should go back to council from the commission. Mr. Rice, any other updates on schedule?
The Community Resources Art Plan is looking at, they actually asked to meet with the commission on October 2. With the, last week, the EV, I'm looking at trying to combine October 2 and October 9 into one meeting.
And could that, could those be study, a study session on the 9th? Was that?
Yes. I just now, Alexis had been working with the consultant and so forth on the October 2 meeting, so I just have to get them to change that date for me. And then there is a rezoning request that'll be coming before the commission on October 16.
Okay.
That'll be a staff item.
And I don't, do we have anything that we think would appear on September 18?
Not at this point in time.
Okay.
Not a staff-generated item.
All right. So we might have our September 4 meeting, be able to take three weeks off, and then we're looking at three meetings in October. Okay. The last thing, I've got something for you, Ms. Danik, if you don't mind, and this you must blame Commissioner Buckley for. Commissioner Buckley mentioned to me something that I thought was very interesting, and we'd appreciate your guidance on this. He said, you know, there are planning commissions, Board of Adjustments and whatnot, that have alternate members. In the event that someone is absent, or in the case like we had last week, where there was a causal, that there might be someone who's an alternate who would step into that position. So the question was your advice on whether state law allows us to do that, whether that would be consistent with the city charter. And I presume that if that were to be something that we would want to have here, it would require an ordinance to do so. But any thoughts you have on that, and you do not have to do it off the top of your head, but unless you know.
The only thing I would start with is that if there, basically, if you're requesting some sort of additional authority or ability to, you know, change the membership, change the body, it would have to be a city council, like, they would have to formally act. So at this time, I'm not saying it's not possible, or it is possible. I think what I would have to do is probably put together some type of recommendation, send that in a privileged email to the body, and then we would have to figure out basically next steps, what that looks like. How are we going to send a proposed ordinance amendment to city council that would allow this alternate member, you know, suggestion? And in addition, are we going to update the rules and regs to reflect that as well? Or what does that look like? So I will send a privileged email based on some research, you know, if this is feasible, and then maybe some suggestions about what the pathway looks like. But I can guarantee city council would have to be the ultimate determiner, determinator?
Right.
Determining body, yeah.
Right.
Yes.
That would be terrific. I would greatly appreciate it. I thought it was a very good suggestion. And, you know, especially when our quorum is five, you know, having a couple people be absent, it makes things a little more problematic. Maybe it's not allowed, maybe it is allowed. Personally, and I've said this before to the commission, I don't really like the idea, not as comfortable with the idea of us initiating recommended ordinance changes without city council asking us for it. So it still might be that if this seems logical and doable, maybe city council will ask us to make that recommendation, or do it on their own. But that would be terrific. I'd appreciate that very much. Any other general business items? Well, thank you all. Greatly appreciated. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting at 9:56 p.m.
Thank you.